Good afternoon, welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, our monthly appointed directors meeting. 12:03 PM, my name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We have, I think Commissioner Mihail.
Yeah, she's, she's here.
Cut off there, but.
We're just gonna bring the camera up.
Looks like he is phoning or zooming in. And we have County Manager Ramirez Chavez and a whole crew of our appointed directors that we'll get to hear from today. And it's just an open forum and public can follow along on our YouTube channel or by calling 360-252-9020. Pin 1234. So I guess we'll just kind of go around the horn. I know I asked you guys for TV recommendations last time and I'm gonna award the prize to Dennis. Who got me onto Yellowstone, that's pretty good. When I was 11, my favorite show was Dallas and basically Yellowstone is Dallas, like exactly, except instead of oil people, it's ranchers. And it's a real throwback to that. Okay, so let's start with Josh Cummings.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, otherwise known as CPED. And yeah, just always appreciate this lunchtime meeting and hope everybody's doing great. Quick update from CPED. The ADUs, as the Board is aware, were approved by the Board of County Commissioners, the accessory dwelling units. And we, as normal course of action, have coordinated with the Olympia Master Builders to have an article released on that. So getting some traction on that with OMB, making sure that the community is aware. As we're thinking about all the ways to help with our housing issues in the region, that the Board took big action on having those ADUs be approved. Moving forward with the HCP, I think that there's a letter going to the US Fish and Wildlife Service from the Board soon. That asked them to continue to stay on track with the draft EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement. So that we can hopefully receive our ITP, the Incidental Take Permit, to serve our citizens come 2022, early 2022 on the permits. That relate to our HCP, our Habitat Conservation Plan, sorry, couldn't help it. You know, other than that, just plugging along, we've got lots of applications coming in and people building and it's, it's kind of an interesting thing. We just had the energy code, building codes passed by the Washington State Legislature. So January saw a huge uptick, we had like 126 single-family residential applications come in in February. When usually we have about 26. So that big kind of push came through and then we're getting those out the door. But the prices of lumber are high and so permits are coming in, but building and new construction is an interesting flux. We're monitoring all that as we look towards building the budget, so I'll stop talking, but CPED's doing good. Thanks for your support.
Any questions for Josh?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to, go this way on my screen, Maria.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to report that I feel like I'm on the home stretch to get the updated telework policy before the Board. It's been very well vetted, sent it out to the policy work group, got 11 responses back. I was able to incorporate 99% of them, met with the ITC and have a deadline with them to get me their comments by Monday, which is March 15th. And after that, I'll submit an AIS for the Board's consideration. On labor relations, we are still mediating with the Court Security Group. No success yet, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. The Board ratified the Deputy Sheriff's Administrative Association Collective bargaining agreement. So that just leaves the Court Security Group. And staff and I are preparing for budget season and starting to develop internal service rates. Those are my highlights, any questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Maria, Jennifer Walker.
Hello, everyone. So a couple of things, one, I met with my leadership team this morning and we talked about the resolution that the Board passed yesterday regarding racism and addressing that. And the Public Works Department leadership is in full alignment and support of that effort, looking forward to working on that. From a personal perspective, as someone who at the age of 10 was raised by my Puerto Rican stepfather. I am hopeful, I am glad for the first step that the county has taken and hopeful that we will make real progress and sustained progress, so I thank you to the Board for that. A few things going on in Public Works, Mullen Road, we're making really good progress. We actually will be doing a Board briefing to give more detail on that project. In part because of what Josh mentioned regarding the cost of materials increasing. But the sewer is completed, sewer connections are done. Just finishing up kind of the underground work and so folks are gonna start seeing the above-ground work now paving on the south side and sidewalks being installed. So that's going along well. We are seeking input on an alternatives study for an intersection, the Evergreen Parkway and Mud Bay. And so there's a five-minute video explaining kind of the current conditions and the alternatives that are being looked at. So if you go to the Public Works website under projects, and again, it is the Evergreen/Mud Bay Interchange Study, five-minute video illustrations of the two, the proposed alternatives and then just a short survey, we're asking for feedback on that. And I think the last thing I'll highlight is we are completing this week a streetlight upgrade on Martin Way, so we are converting 75 streetlights to LED lights. We've got 1,049 streetlights right now in the county, 360 of those are LED lights. When we have LED lights, it's a 66.5% less energy that is used. So even on this, the conversion, this piece of it, the 75 streetlights, it was a total cost of 46,000. We did get a grant from Puget Sound Energy that covered a little over 38% of that. And will be, I think recouping, we'll start realizing the savings of almost $9,000 a year in like three years. So making progress on that. And then we're just gearing up for, I guess, it's always our busy season, I guess, probably for everybody, but we're gearing up for construction. Yeah, Josh.
Just wanted to quick mention from a previous position at the county, that streetlight upgrade was one of the climate actions that the Board had discussed in previous discussions, so that's awesome. Do you have a GHG, a greenhouse gas reduction equivalent that PSC could provide?
I'm gonna say no, but I can ask.
Yeah, you can do it.
Thanks.
It's a big deal.
All right, next on my screen is Patrick.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Patrick O'Connor, Thurston County Public Defense. Busy, busy times right now, I want to lift up a couple of things that's going on in the department. We're just onboarding two new hires for some vacancies, so I'll get the opportunity to introduce those two new hires before the Board as we schedule them. But both attorneys are joining our felony division, both are women from other county public defender agencies in the state of Washington. So really excited about the hires. I'll share this information that we have started back-up jury trials in Thurston County Superior Court as of last week. So far, we haven't had one, I think, go all the way to verdict, but the Chandler Court facility is up and running, it's safely operating. And we're excited to see that, I think everybody in the justice system is excited to see that trials are opened back up to, to the justice system. So we're really excited about how that'll help, you know, impact the backlog of cases that we've been experiencing throughout COVID. And then District Court, our District Court jury trials, I believe, were slated to start sometime next month in the same building. So those are two exciting updates for, I think, everybody in, in the justice system to get jury trials in our community started back up. Well, it's been a very busy couple of weeks here on, on another front that I'll share with the Board. I'm sure the Board's familiar and perhaps my colleagues are as well, but for the public. On February 25th, the Washington State Supreme Court issued a very landmark decision in a case called State v. Blake. Essentially, the holding by the court, it declared our unlawful possession of a controlled substance criminal statute unconstitutional and void because it didn't have a mental element contained in the criminal code. So that, the fallout and the repercussions of that decision are really quite monumental on a lot of different fronts. Essentially, what we've been working through here at the county in response to that decision is finding every client of ours that has a case that's pending in the criminal system with that charge and the prosecutors dismissing those charges. Our next order of business is to identify everybody in the Department of Corrections that's incarcerated, that is either serving that sentence or a sentence that has that, that criminal code conviction attached to it or has that conviction in their criminal history, which is going to be a lot of individuals that are serving sentences in the Department of Corrections. So we're taking a very phased approach and I know this decision impacts county government and municipal governments on a variety of levels, some of which are yet to be realized. Their financial impacts for the department, every individual in the Department of Corrections that this case affects needs to come back to our, our courts and be resentenced. And so we're in the process of assigning those cases once I, once I find out who they are and where they are, that we'll be going through that process. So there'll be impacts there to our, to our department, but those impacts are gonna be offset by the number of cases that we're not gonna see in our justice system unless there's a legislative fix and warrants and incarceration time and all the other things associated with, with these offenses. So it's a really exciting time for us, we're reaching out to the public and so any members of the public that, that are listening to this, feel free to call our main line at 360-754-4897. We're keeping a running log of contacts from folks in the community that are eligible to have these criminal convictions vacated off the record so they can move on with their lives, so feel free to reach out to us and we will, we will assist you in due time. It's overwhelming, so it's gonna take some time to, to get all of these cases appropriately handled, but that's my update.
Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes, so do you have, like, how many people have contacted your office or has your office started to start answering all these calls probably, have you noticed if it's?
Yeah, so we have, we have a running log that we're keeping in Teams, sort of like a Google Doc, so tip of the cap to Dennis. So we, I think we have, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it's over 100 individuals so far that have reached out. We're taking contact information depending on where they are, so if they're in the community and have finished serving their, their sentence and are asking to go back and have that sentence vacated, we're taking their information. We're getting a lot of calls from former clients that are currently incarcerated at the Department of Corrections that are eligible to be resentenced. So we're taking that information down as well. It's a real phased approach Commissioner, because it is so overwhelming. We're talking about thousands, literally thousands of people that are gonna be eligible to have that criminal conviction taken off their record. We're gonna assist in that process, but our priority right now is to address anybody who's currently incarcerated at the Department of Corrections to have their sentence adjusted appropriately.
So in terms, can I have a follow-up question, Chair, I know. In terms of especially people that are at DOC right now, how is that going to look when it comes to transporting people over here? Have, has that been ironed out yet?
Well, it's been a priority in the conversations I've had with both the bench, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and our Corrections Chief, that we are very much limiting anybody who needs to be transported. I think right now, the plan that, in the directive that I've given, is that we will not be transporting individuals unless they request to be transported. Criminal defendant does have the right to be present in court should they choose. But our emphasis is gonna be to really limit the number of transports from around the state to the Thurston County Jail, obviously for COVID safety protocols. We're working with the Department of Corrections, I think they're continuing to react to this decision. Most correctional facilities right now are Zoom capable, so we continue to work with the court and all parties to try to schedule these and have as many, if not all of them, be, be done remotely.
Thank you.
An amusing story to me was that, so I was a public defender in Alaska, which where like 48 other states has a mental state requirement in its drug law. And when I, when this case broke and Pat and John Toonheim and Sheriff Snaza and I had a meeting and Sheriff Snaza found it very comical, the facts of Blake, because the facts of the case were that the drugs were located in the little tiny coin pocket of a jeans or whatever and the defendant wanted to say that she'd purchased those at a thrift store like two days before. So didn't realize that there was a little baggie of stuff stuffed in the coin purse. And Sheriff Snaza thought that was really funny and I was explaining to him that in states where there's a mental state requirement, like Alaska, I mean, that's absolute. I mean, every single one of my clients who is charged with drug possession would tell me it was not their jacket, it was not the wrong. I, I had clients insist on running, trying to run the wrong pants defense multiple times, it is not unusual whatsoever. I talked, I talked all of those clients out of going to trial, but I did take at least two wrong jacket cases to trial, one, one of them. So it's just a kind of a normal, it's a normal part of the process when you, when, when the state has to prove that you knowingly possess the drugs. And it's just not something that Washington police or prosecutors are used to, because it just hasn't been an element here ever, so they never had that burden. So anyway, that's funny, I, I remember a wrong, several wrong pants defendants, those ones are hard to, are hard to make plausible, but they're out there. Thanks, Pat, next is Dennis.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Dennis Osorio, IT. So some updates from our department, some of the bigger projects, we're still trying to wrap up our ERP contracting. I think we're, we're moving along pretty well. Before we take you to the Board, one of the next sticking points is really we need to finalize when our go-live date is and there's a lot of different stakeholders in that project and you gotta have those go-live dates in the contract. So we gotta kind of find a go-live date that works for everyone. And just recently, the consultant GFOA that we partnered with has sent us some options, so I'm sure we'll be going over that this week. The permitting replacement project, we did get some final quotes from the vendor that we're looking at as a consultant for that and we'll be meeting with the stakeholders as well within the next week, I think that, that meeting just went out to finalize if that's what we're looking to do from a stakeholder perspective before we take it to the Board as well. Another project, which I'm sure some of you have heard about, is the JAVs, the court video replacement. I think we finally made some, some significant progress on that and stabilized that system. Which has been great, because that has really been a thorn, not only in our side, but a lot of the stakeholders. I will say that last year at the CERA funding, we were able to get some additional redundant internet connections put in for the county. And what we were able to do is route all the traffic via Zoom from the courts out of those other connections, because our primary connection goes through the Washington State. And we don't have access after that on what kind of filtering is being done. So we were able to route it out a different direction, which really helped with troubleshooting and I think we were able to stabilize that. So although that wasn't the primary use for those internet connections, it really allowed the county a lot more flexibility. The next big thing that we're looking at is budget development, we're jumping straight into it, internal rates need to be developed, so we'll be doing inventories. Working with all offices and departments to make sure we have accurate counts on everything as we develop our rates and get those approved by the Board later this summer. And then the final thing, and I know most of the, most folks here already heard about it, we are doing some Teams training that's included in our licensing. Please put that out to your staff, anybody else who wants to join, wants to learn how to use Teams more. That's included in our licensing costs and I think everybody probably can use that since they're, they're on virtual meetings so much.
Dennis, on the go-live dates for the ERP, how are you, how are you coordinating with the stakeholders to have those final dates established, what are you thinking?
Yeah, the stakeholders are really driving that, so they're in, some of them are actually in this meeting, Robin and Maria. We're, we're trying to find a date that obviously works, you know, everybody has their bad time of the year. But if we take everybody's bad time of the year, there's, there's no year left. We have to, we have to figure out some type of compromise that'll work for everybody and it's, it's two years out, which is even more difficult to try to finalize. But, but yeah, that's not definitely, that's not being driven by IT, that'll be an agreement amongst the stakeholders of, of that project.
Okay, well, because I'm thinking about, all of us here will have staff that have to help with the implementation, so that's why I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, there's been numerous conversations about the end of the year and how that doesn't work for certain things or budget development or, you know, there's a lot of constraints in that, so we're getting as much input as we can before we make that decision.
Got it, so are we thinking implementation in 2022 or 2023? 2022?
That's, that's been kicked around as well, yeah, we have, I think we have four different options right now from the, from our consultants, so. And Robin could probably speak to it as well, we've talked about staggered implementation, depending on what bit, you know, what business area, so.
Well, depending on what we do with the budget, if we do annual or biennial, if we go to biennial, then certainly 2022, you know, potentially is looking better than having the implementation and the budget all in the same year in 2023, but, okay, thank you.
What the, what the GFOA is recommending to us is parallel finance and HR at the same time. On track to go-live in October of 2022. So that's the proposal that they'd like us to seriously consider, but there are three others. And there's a certain amount of concern about fatigue on the part of staff, that's a, that's an aggressive implementation plan. And we want to make sure we're successful, so we're, we're taking a hard look at that. And then the budget and the other components would go later. They're talking about budget in June or July of 23.
As well as like any additional functions that we don't have now, so what we're essentially looking at is almost like a minimal viable product on what we would go live with and that we would slowly bring other functions on, so we're not having to keep the whole elephant in the queue.
Right, but we are talking about complete processes. So financial services up and running with all of the core processes intact. HR and payroll up and running, all of the core processes intact. Any supplemental processes for those two systems online within the next six months? And then the other modules that we're purchasing, budget, assets, grant management, contract management. All on a somewhat extended but not forever timeline.
Any other questions for Dennis? Dennis, you can sign Romero and I up for your Teams meeting, we definitely are challenged.
Well, I think some of you guys are having challenges up there because of connectivity, which we, I think we've resolved up in your area, so hopefully that fixes some of the challenges that we're having.
I, I want to, curious if you could just say a touch more about the JAVs piece, like what is it, like kind of on the ground, like what is it doing and what is it not doing at this point?
So, sure, we, we've had numerous challenges with that project, some of it was configuration, some of it was obviously we just put a large project on a very short timeline, so some of it was training. And then a big issue was our Zoom connectivity and how it interfaces with JAVs. And that was really causing a lot of frustration and that's what I was talking about, us switching the internet connection, we were able to resolve that issue. So now the Zoom connections connecting to the court video are working much more stable, so I think that, that, that was it. Since the project first went live, it was, you know, when, when there's a big change, everything kind of gets put in the same bucket. And you gotta really kind of peel that onion on, oh, well, this isn't actually a system failure, this is just folks not knowing how to use the new system. Or this is an actual configuration, this isn't a system failure, this is just you want it used differently. So we went through the, we worked really close with the stakeholders and I think we've gotten all those separated into the correct buckets. And I believe, I'm still monitoring the tickets and we're still having weekly meetings with the, with the vendor to go over all the tickets to make sure we're putting those in the correct buckets, but they greatly diminished over the last couple of weeks since we've made these bigger changes.
Okay, Shelley's picture's been jumping all over my screen, but at one point she was next, so I'm gonna go with Shelley.
Hey, good afternoon Commissioner, Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And this meeting always follows our Board of Health Day, so I feel like you've already listened to me ad nauseam all day yesterday. So I'll try to share a couple of things that I didn't already share. One thing that we're getting a lot of questions about, and I'm sure all of you are too, is in terms of the roadmap for recovery and what's coming next for phases. And we have been engaged in conversations about that and we know that there are plans to be able to announce what those metrics will be soon. So we expect in the next week or so that we'll, we'll So we expect in the next week or so that we'll, we'll see, see more information on that. Our cases are down, so that's really great news. The governor also announced last week that uh, a timeline for the additional phases for vaccine. And we've been getting a lot of questions about that too, as you can imagine, because um, Phase 1B Tier 2 was announced to be as soon as March 22nd. Um, dependent upon supply. That would uh, make a lot of people eligible, um, including some of our criminal justice partners here. And here in Thurston County and we are planning to have a, a criminal justice special vaccine clinic on our county campus coming soon. But while we're really grateful that our vaccine supply has increased, we are only about 50% of the way through our elder population. So we're really trying to target and focus our efforts to make sure that we're reaching those at highest risk for morbidity at this point. That's why this weekend we will be launching our mass vaccination uh, site at South Puget Sound Community College. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And two of the days of that clinic will be exclusively for people 65 and older. Another day on Saturday will be for educators and childcare providers that haven't been able to access the federal pharmacy program thus far. We're continuing, of course, to uh, reserve 20% at least for those that have challenges in accessing and reaching out to our underserved community partners and populations. To make sure that we're advancing opportunities to them to be able to get vaccine. So um, lots going on there. In addition, we've also partnered with our regional counties, Lewis, Pacific, and Gray's Harbor. To request a regional incident management organization. In doing so, that will make us eligible in Thurston County for FEMA reimbursement for all of our mass vaccination expenses. So that's really good news. Um, we have lots and lots of funding that we're expecting to blow in to help support our vaccination efforts. Uh, coming up here shortly. So that's, that's really great. In addition to about $7 million more in rental assistance funding. Um, that we are working with the Community Action Council and Community Youth Services. To expand the efforts and programs that they've already been offering to assist people who need help paying rent and utilities. So um, really great news there too. And then our law enforcement assisted diversion program, Public Health and Social Services. Is essentially the fiscal agent for that program. So we've been working with all of our county partners, many here on the screen, Patrick, Marianne. To get that program going and things are going well. We're moving, moving along. The ironic thing about us having so much funding available to us right now is that our senior management analyst, Marcia Boyle. Has taken a position in Clark County. So as of this Friday, she will be uh, taking a new job. And continuing to stay on to help us out a little bit through uh, May 1st. But we are having to cobble together some help for our, for our finance department. And just want to say huge thanks to Robin Romero and Jennifer for all of your help in um, supporting us. So that's all.
This is for Shelley? No? For the roadmap to recovery, I'm really hoping the governor carves out that bluegrass band exception that I've been advocating for. I haven't seen it yet. Okay, Marianne, you're up.
I wanted to apologize or at least say thank you for your patience while I keep going off screen. Also, I've been in interviews for the district court administrator position all day and will be also after this meeting, so I was eating. I figured I would spare you all the opportunity to watch me eat. Of relevance though, um, Patrick already talked about State v Blake. Uh, we've been working with our partners, both internal to the county and external for all of the ramifications. As it relates to pre-trial services and operations. To um, include our risk assessment tool and our future risk assessment tool, the validation study that's been happening. We finally got through um, operations for COVID for that and felt like we were in a good place. And then State v Blake came along. So we are excited about the things that are happening. But it does create some opportunity for looking at how we are doing things. We have been, I think I had the opportunity also to introduce the commissioners to my new staff. Uh, we expanded to district court yesterday, or yesterday I introduced the new staff. We had expanded district court yesterday. That was on the 19th of February. So it's been a few weeks. I will be meeting with the district court bench to have a check-in with how things are going. We have only been serving the domestic violence cases in terms of screening and recommendations and supervision. And then we will take on the additional cases. But that was just the beginning phase of our rollout as we start. Training staff and onboarding them, getting them going. Things have been going well so far. There haven't been any large issues, so I anticipate expanding to the rest of the cases hopefully soon. Also just started onboarding our diversion cases and are working with um, prosecution and defense to look at. How we will be doing that. One of the benefits to what we've been looking at for evidence-based practices for diversion and pre-charge diversion. Is that we've talked with Oregon and our counterparts in Oregon who had decriminalized drug possession before. And um, so we have some ideas already in place for how to set up our operations for doing that. With respect to uh, the APPR project, that's been moving forward. Also, we have uh, trainings that we had finished. There were eight different workshops. That many of the law enforcement stakeholders, Patrick, John, the judges had participated in looking at um. The criminal justice system as a whole, how to implement our risk assessment tool and set that up. Uh, the impacts of racism in a community and setting those things up. So we got a lot of great information. They were recorded, so we have an opportunity to look back and benefit from those. Uh, including sharing them with our staff and disseminating the information. So we are appreciative of that. We are also setting up some of our performance measures and our data dashboard. Had a chance to do a sneak peek at our data dashboard that they are setting up for us. And I'm really excited about the, that when it will go live through the RTI International. So. That's not everything, but those are the highlights. As Jennifer said, we all have the busy season.
Questions for Marianne? This is a random question for Patrick or Marianne. I was just curious about in the pandemic, like are DUIs up or down? They, you know, people, bars are closed, but people are stressed out, but the cops are maybe not running DUI patrols because they're trying to, you know, work on other things. I just, I didn't have a sense of whether that, those case numbers would be up or down or the same pandemic DUI.
Uh, I will get back to you on the numbers. Yeah, that uh, see if there's an increase. I don't have that uh.
You don't have a sense of it, just talk.
I have a sense of it, yeah.
It is a good question. I would venture to guess that they're not down, but I would like to, to confirm that. One of the things that we will be implementing is um, looking at this CJTA funding for pre-trial services. I think Shelley and I both just signed that contract or that agreement, the MOU with each other. So that would be of benefit for people that are on pre-trial services that hasn't been available for pre-trial services before. And so that is a, a new benefit um, for, so that people who are under pre-trial services supervision. That have pending cases will have their urinal, urinalysis testing um, paid for by CJTA funds if they're in treatment. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Marianne. Let's go to Kurt.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. As with everybody else, uh, starting budget development. And uh, as we go into the process, um, I'm finding out that there was a survey that was put out by Robin. I want to say yesterday on whether, or feedback on an annual versus biannual budget. I thought the answer was a slam dunk until I consulted with my staff and turned out that we have a split within the staff. So I'm weighing the pros and cons on biannual versus annual and my recommendation back, but I'm working through that. So anyway, uh, my, my, I'm trying to put my personal preferences aside and listen to the actual arguments or not arguments, recommendations. That everybody's bringing together. Um, on the area of emergency management, one of the things we got this week was a surprise. Well, I shouldn't say surprise, but we were able to quantify during 2020 and only in nine months of 2020, because we started in uh, April of uh, 2020. Our COVID PPE distribution from the state was totaled just under $2 million. So in other words, we requested from the state and they shipped to us just under $2 million of PPE. That we then further disseminated, distributed within Thurston County to healthcare organizations, public health, uh, law enforcement, uh, other areas in the county. But I was a little um, surprised that it was that much. I knew we were doing a lot, but I was a little surprised when we came down with the number. Because on year-end closing, one of the requirements under federal grants is to uh, quantify donations. And that's counted technically as a donation because the state donated all that PPE down to the county. But that was a lot of uh, PPE that was administered by emergency management staff inside of the ECC during 2020. And again, that was just nine months of 2020. So um, uh, kudos to the emergency management staff who managed to pull all that off. During a very hectic year. As we're moving forward into this year, uh, one of the things we're looking at is uh, a national level exercise in 2022. It's called Castadia Rising 2022. It's scheduled for June. We signed up for uh, an extended play agreement with the state, but we took a new concept inside of Thurston County. We had the Thurston County Emergency Management Council and the chair of that council sign off on the commitment for an extended play. That would cover all the jurisdictions within um, Thurston County. And the reason for that was that we found it make uh, for more flexibility within the jurisdictions and also streamline our process for uh, developing the exercise play. And some of the scenarios. So we've taken a, a, a new approach on that. Um, the state so far seems to uh, be receptive towards our new approach versus a individual application by all the different cities in the county uh, inside of Thurston. And then later this uh, towards this summer, we're going to have an emergency management 101 for newly elected uh, officials. And so, and we're actually going to open up to any elected official, but it's going to be focused on newly elected officials. This is probably what you want and you need to know as far as a newly elected official for emergency management, for emergency response. Emergency declarations within your jurisdiction, et cetera. So we're going to be putting out a save the date here in the next couple of weeks for newly elected officials. On the medic one side, um, along with emergency management, continue to do vaccine clinic support for public health. And trying to support public health as much as we can in that area. Um, I will tell you, and I'm going to say this for everybody in the audience, because Shelley already knows this. Medic one does not have any vaccine, control any vaccine or make any decisions regarding where vaccine goes. We still continue to receive inquiries about vaccine. And so I put that out there because um, we, we just don't have any control of it. Nor should we, because we're not in the decision-making process for that. We provide support when necessary. And if necessary, provide people who can uh, administer the vaccine. So I throw that out there. Um, I'm hoping that will reduce some of our inquiries. Um, and then um, as we go through the budget process with medic one. Uh, one of the things we found is our, our medical supply costs have increased uh, from pre-COVID to post-COVID. So what, what we're seeing right now is a higher cost for all the medical supplies that we acquire for the different um, EMTs and paramedics across the county. So we're doing our budget development. That is going to be reflected in that budget uh, process. And I will be talking with obviously Robin Campbell and her staff to determine how we can account for that increased cost. And then um, one of the things that I uh, was hoping to avoid, but we can't put it off any longer is medic unit replacement. We have about seven medic units that are reaching the end of their life expectancy. So we'll be doing that as part of the budget uh, replacement process as well. So that's what we have going on and just in a nutshell. Uh, to submit any questions anybody has.
Yes, Jennifer.
Kurt, on the kind of onboarding package you're putting together around um, emergency management responding to emergencies for um, elected officials? Is that what I heard you say? You're putting together something like that? Could I get a copy of that? Can you share that?
We'll share it. Not only will we share it, we'll also invite not just elect, newly elected officials. Again, we'll invite uh, uh, senior leadership across the county, not only in county government, but across all the jurisdictions in the county.
Thank you. What's the proposed schedule on that?
Uh, I want to say early June, um, but I don't have that in front of me right now, but we're going to put out a save today.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Kurt? Okay, Robin, you're up.
Good afternoon. Uh, in the interest of time, I'm going to go kind of quick. I also wanted to mention the budget survey. I um, sent it out yesterday. We've had 13 responses so far. So um, and it'll only be open until Monday at 5:00. So please uh, do your thinking and get your thoughts into the system. We are anticipating, as I'm sure all of you have heard, quite a bit of money. $57 million roughly split between two years under the American Rescue Plan. Um, that still has the last hurdles to pass before it hits the president's desk. But we do expect that that money is going to stay intact. So the first thing we're doing is looking back at 2020 at any costs that we could remotely say are related to the pandemic. That we can claim under this new money. That's the first thing we're doing. And we're doing that to create capacity in the funds that we currently have. Then Romero and I'll be working uh, with the board on the strategy uh, for what to do going forward. And then last, I wanted to mention that in central services, uh, we're starting to think ahead to um. To next year and capital projects. So if there are any projects that you were thinking, gee, I wish I had another room here. Or I really wish um, we could expand there or my roof's leaking. Now is the time to reach out to uh, central services and let us know what you might have in mind. So we can factor that into the capital plans that will go to the board this summer. And that's it from me. I, I know you've got some ideas, Jennifer.
I just want to know, who do I submit my grandiose plans to?
Send them to me, please.
Anything else for Robin? County manager, no.
Uh, thank you. I'm always concerned when Jennifer uh, outlines her grandiose plans. So we'll see how that goes. Just an update, um, an hour ago, the Congress, uh, the House Representatives uh, passed the, the coronavirus relief fund. And it's headed to the president's desk for signature. So that's an update. And at this point, probably the president's going to be signing. That is going to be, as Robin has stated, is going to put us in a position to be innovative. And innovative, uh, there is a little bit less restrictions uh, than the coronavirus relief fund that we had in 2020. But there's some restriction, how, restrictions however they have to meet. There's going to be an interesting process to go through and uh, as soon as we get a confirmation, we'll uh, work with the board to uh, pre-uh, prepare a plan. And see where the board likes to go on this. They perhaps may include some internal elements. They perhaps may include some internal elements as well as some external elements to continue to help the community. In the last couple of weeks, a lot of stuff has gone on here in the commissioner's office. The commissioner's has been extremely busy passing legislation from the climate action plan to the, the current crisis, racism, a crisis in Thurston County. And as a result, there is going to be a lot of work for all of us moving forward. So I look forward to continue the coordination with all of you related to what we need to do on all the elements related to the past legislation by the board. That's all I have.
Hey, Commissioner, over here.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. I guess for the county manager now, may, possibly. Okay, now that this has been passed, is the legislature, have they been holding back on any of the legislative proposals kind of in anticipation that this might happen and and then now that it kind of has happened, some other things coming down the pike that you're aware of?
The state legislature, is that, is that your question, sir?
Pardon?
Is it the state legislature?
Yeah, with the state, I thought was, you're following the state legislature pretty good.
Yeah, they, they, there might be some, some options, the state legislature, because the state also is going to have a direct allocation from this, the federal relief bill. But the money they were discussing at this point is the direct allocation the county will be receiving. So you're right, there may be some, as Shelley stated, there may be a continued support of vaccination and that may be coming through the state. There is a lot of elements within this bill that certainly the legislature will have to take in action in order to materialize the expenditures.
So, so if I could add to that, the $56 million that we've been talking about is not going through the state. It's not like CRF money in that respect. That will come directly to the county, but as Romero said, there will be additional federal funding that goes to the state and we may see some of that coming through various state agencies. And what we've been told is that next week we'll see the legislative budgets, or no, next week we'll see the forecast. The week following that, we'll see the budgets. And the budgets will not have the new federal money in it, that the legislature intends to run the new federal money from the American Rescue Plan on a separate appropriation bill. So we'll be waiting to see what the legislature does with that. But the, the $56 million is going to come to us direct in two big lumps.
Just a follow-up on that. Are we going to have something in place pretty soon? I mean, we've had it in place all along with the Economic Development Council and those folks so that we can be helping citizens that are in a pickle, whether, I don't know if it's unemployment or rent or their ability to, some folks out there are suffering, others aren't, and others are. So will we be able to react fairly quickly now that this is passed?
Yes, sir. And, and that was the intent of my comment. The, the proposal that we're going to be bringing to the board will have an external element and an internal element. The external element will be exactly what you described.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, I have already started having a conversation with Jenica since she is the liaison with the Thurston Strong group as to how we need to start gearing up for the potential decision by the board to allocate additional funding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just a few minutes. I guess my report is just that I've spent, in terms of things outside of what happens in the boardroom, I've spent the most amount of my time working, preparing for my role in the Climate Steering Committee. I've attended numerous trainings regarding how you get buildings to be more energy efficient, including retrofitting older buildings, because that's a huge component of what we're going to, of the challenge in front of us. So I've been trying to get my, my understanding up because it's a complicated issue. And it will take a lot of work to get a good program in place that will work. Jennifer, I will watch your video about Evergreen and Mud Bay because I, I'm in and around that interchange every day. So very curious what you got on top there. And that's about it. Anybody else have a final salvo before we adjourn?
I, I guess I, I would just comment, keep up the good work. You folks are all doing great. So thank you. I'm sure all of us feel that way.
Although Amy Davis is in the, in the room and she asked me to remind you to submit your monthly reports. Thank you, checked.
We can, all right, good. We're adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. See, Amy, I threw you under the bus.
You did?